Turn it on. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Pasco City Council meeting tonight. The city thanks you for attending and being part of our city government. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table and a detailed package, agenda package, is available on the city of Pasco's website. The city council meetings are televised live on Spectrum Cable, channel 191 in Pasco and Richland, and are streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. Please silence all mobile phones and other electronic devices during our meeting so that they don't interrupt our meeting, please. And then council asks that everyone in the audience who wishes to speak during the visitors' section or during the scheduled item section on the agenda to sign in prior, which has been done, to the meeting on the sheet next to the agendas. Print your name clearly, include the section, the meeting you plan to speak under, and the topic you wish to speak about. This sheet will be given to me to use to call the speaker forward. And now we will have a roll call vote. I would ask that you please call, please.
Serrano.
Here.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Milne.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Seven, present and accounted for.
Thank you, and we will all rise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Let's see here. Consent agenda, the next one, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Council considers these items to be routine and approve them in a single roll call vote unless council members or the public wishes to discuss the item, then it may be removed from the consent agenda to business items and considered separately. Is there anybody that has anything they want to consider separately? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
To, sorry, to approve the bad debt write-off.
I don't think you're on here.
Sorry. I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second. Okay, I'll second, but I will, I'm gonna go ahead and go through and read the consent agenda, I missed that part. So, all items, okay, so the, on the consent agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. Is that the right way? Approval of the meeting minutes of the Pasco City Council held on January 6, 2020, and the special meeting held January 13, 2020, and rescheduled workshop held on January 14. For bills and communications to approve claims in a total amount of $4,787,607.68 with three separate checks. To approve bad debt write-offs for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal accounts. Accounts receivable in the total amount of $257,094.53. And that amount authorized, and of that amount authorized, $134,284.45 to be turned over for collection. And now, we can entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve, the consent calendar is read.
We'll second it still.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been seconded. All those in favor of approving, oh, excuse me?
It needs to be done by a vote.
Oh, yes, and we'll have a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Martinez.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
And Maloney.
Yes.
Let me see here, hold on for a second. Here, I got that one. Okay, the motion passed unanimously. Next, we have proclamations and acknowledgements, and we have a community risk reduction week. Chief Bob Geer, would you like to?
Sure. Monday, January 20, 2020 is Martin Luther King Day and is nationally recognized as a national day of service and an opportunity for communities to reduce the risk in their community through a series of educational and other programs. And the city of Pasco's proclamation will designate the week of January 20, 2020 as Community Risk Reduction Week, a grassroots initiative of fire service professionals across the nation designed to raise awareness of the importance of community risk reduction in the fire service community and an opportunity to make communities safer. And just for the public's knowledge, that our efforts in community risk reduction are to look at injuries or accidents that can happen before they happen and try and intervene in that. A good example is our smoke detector program. Instead of expecting senior citizens to climb and change smoke detector batteries, we make a real effort to get out and take care of smoke detectors, hundreds and hundreds of them across the community. When the firefighters are in the house doing the smoke detectors, they might talk to an elderly person about rugs on the floor and the danger from tripping on those and getting a fall hazard. So, it's trying to keep people healthier and not have to respond to their emergencies after, and that's what community risk reduction is all about. And the mayor has a whereas and therefore proclamation to read. Our community risk reduction officer is Ben Shear, he runs the program primarily scheduling people, crews, trying to get them to the right places to take care of these, all the events that they do. And Ben, I think, is gonna receive the, come up and receive the proclamation from the mayor.
Thank you, Chief Geer. And Ben, I would like to just say kudos. Ben has been a great support, helping a lot of people in town, coordinates all these different events, and appreciate your help and your efforts with this. Sure makes it pleasant when you can come out and do what you do. Thank you. But with that, I wanna read this, I'm gonna just skim through this proclamation, and Community Risk Reduction Week. Whereas every 24 seconds, a fire department in the United States responds to a fire somewhere in the nation, a fire occurs in a structure at the rate of one every 63 seconds, and a home fire occurs every 88 seconds. And whereas, an estimated $23 billion in property damage occurred as a result of fire in 2017, and more than 58,000 wildfires burned nearly 9 million acres and destroyed 25,000 structures in 2018. And whereas, the fire services, this fire service plays an integral role in the community preparedness, as the president declared 118 major disasters in 2017 and 18, which resulted in more than 3,500 deaths, countless injured, and over $400 billion in property damages. And whereas, the goal of the community risk reduction is to reduce the occurrence and impact of emergency events for both community members and emergency responders through deliberate actions in the areas of the five Es of education, engineering, enforcement, emergency response, and economic incentive. And whereas, Monday, January 20, 2020 is Martin Luther King Day and is nationally recognized as a national day of service and an opportunity for commuters to reduce the risk in their communities through a series of educational and other programs. And whereas, the value of community support from local, state, and national partners to address community risk is recognized to meet the demands on paid, combination, and volunteer members of the fire service. Now therefore, I Saul Martinez, Mayor of the city of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim January 24th, excuse me, January 20th through 24th, 2020 as Community Risk Reduction Week in the city of Pasco. I have here on to sep my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Pasco, state of Washington, to be affixed this 21st day of January 2020. Mr. Ben, why don't we just take a time and give him a round of applause for what they did?
I just want to add the irony of this, as we're sitting here making this proclamation here in the city of Pasco, our brothers over in Kennewick are currently fighting an apartment fire that started with food on the stove. That's one of our big things here in Pasco that we're trying to prevent between the home smoke alarm program and education, as well as enforcement programs like the city of Pasco has to enforce and making sure those homes are safe for people living here and preventing those fires from happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate all you do. Next on our agenda item, we have visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or the posing of questions with the expectations of immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process, with input from a member of a different source, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes, each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of the formal meeting. So is there anybody here that would like to, in the public that would like to say something that's not on the agenda item? And I'm looking at the list here, and I just want to make sure if somebody who wrote their name down was here for something other than what's on the agenda item.
But if it's similar, my name's on there, but I don't know what I wrote.
Does this have anything to do with the agenda item?
Not really.
Okay, then why don't you come up and state your name and address, please?
So my name is Berta Aranda Glat, and I am at Five Sunflower Court, Pasco, represented by David. So I am here because I just wanted to congratulate first, all the new members of the council and you as the mayor of Pasco. I am here because I was part of the lawsuit against Pasco a few years ago to turn our voting into districts for the purpose of districts being heard and represented. Other than Ms. Roach, all the rest of you are direct beneficiaries of this lawsuit. And I just am so pleased to see a community that really propelled me to be part of that lawsuit. Was it easy to be a face of a lawsuit? No, it wasn't. But I did it because I was very compelled to give a voice to those that don't have voices. And I just, I've been, you guys know I watch you guys every week. And I've been kind of disappointed to see some council members be more concerned about going to, to get a certificate from, I don't, I don't, I know it's very important to some of you guys to get recognized by some, I don't know where you, what, exactly what it's called, but I want you guys to know that success in Pasco is representing the people that you're supposed to represent, and give them a voice rather than your own voice. I just wanted to congratulate those of you who are there, and I definitely wanted to congratulate the community that I put my name in to represent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, if there's nobody else, then we go to, item number six. Excuse me, are you, is it part of the, what's on the agenda?
No.
Okay, come on up, sir.
All right.
Did you sign your, did you sign your name on this?
I did not.
Okay, we can do it after you're done. You got three minutes, sir.
My name's Rock, I live here in Pasco. Just wanted, three things. I wanted to congratulate you on mayor, everybody that's here. I just wanted to know if there's any way we can get you guys to vote openly on two separate things. One thing is to ban an income tax here in the city for locally, and the other thing I would like openly voted on is to make Pasco a Second Amendment sanctuary city. You know, we're sanctuary city for, you know, immigrants, but why can't we have our rights guarded against what you're trying to do on the west side? So, is there any way we can get that done? I know it's not right now, but we'd like an open vote so we can get everybody on the record who stands where.
All right, well, we're not gonna answer that tonight, obviously, but thank you for bringing that up and maybe consider it amongst the council.
Okay.
All right.
All right. And then when's the next open one with, where we can come and speak again?
Oh, that would be two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now?
Yeah, two.
All right, so then could we talk about it then, or how long is it gonna take?
Well, it's, it's something that we have to decide as a council, if we want to put it on the agenda.
Right.
And I can't answer that right now.
Right.
So, just keep your eyes open and see if it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else other than the agenda items? All right, then we'll move forward to number six on the agenda, reports from committees and/or officers. Anybody have anything they want to report?
I attended a DPDA meeting, my first one, last week, and it went well.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarado?
Yes, I attended Ben Frank County Government's meeting, and there we added a few extra projects in Pasco, having to do with downtown, having to do with Road 68. So, it's our transportation improvement program, so just a couple projects that were added towards the tail end of that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to report that I did attend tonight, today's Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce luncheon, to where the topic was regarding the Colima friendship agreement, is that correct? Several of our community members were there. Mr. Milne was there as well. Topic, like I said, was the Colima, Colima friendship, and great topic, changes are coming, growth is coming, and just want to announce, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Josep, there's a steering committee meeting the first Friday of the month, correct?
Correct.
And my, if I'm not mistaken, the community is invited, correct? So I'd like to invite you all that are interested to attend, and it's held at the Pasco Police Department's Committee Center, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to report that, and again, you can be involved and learn a little bit more about what that agreement is by being involved. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Milne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. On last Thursday, I attended the Tri-DEC meeting, and one of the big topics came up was that the Shoreline REIT advance, they're hoping to put it on a bill coming up in the spring of this year, so hopefully we'll see some movement on that. And then also Carl Adrian, who's been the chief executor for a number of years, is retiring, so if you're friends with him, come on down on Thursday, it's like, I think, 4:30 to 6:30 in that timeframe, and you could say your goodbyes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also attended a Hanford Communities meeting that was held the last Thursday evening, or excuse me, Thursday morning. And it's amazing, you know, for all of us, it's just as important to understand what's happening out at Hanford. Hanford is making great strides to do the cleanup job that they're doing. You know, we gotta be careful, well, I won't go there, but I'm just gonna tell you that, you know, I'll just say the media puts out a lot of information, and I'm trusting that it's the right information, but Hanford is doing great things. The manager for DOE, Mr. Brian Vance, is approachable, and he's done an amazing job in his coordination with his team to continue to clean up at Hanford and is doing it as safe as possible. So, you know, I want to appreciate him for his efforts, and also for Pam, who will be retiring soon, who does a tremendous job with the Hanford Communities Board, and Zar will be, being the representative on that board from, you know, going forward. So, there was a lot of, a lot of progress being done out there, and it's, it's important to get informed with that. So thank you for that. So now, we get to number seven, hearings and council actions and ordinances and resolutions relating thereto and unlisted. Ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, and we'll go to item 8A. Now, this, this item is designating city-owned property as surplus to the city needs, and this is, this is a, this is the first of what I believe everybody, most of the people are here for, so we'll get through this one, and then we'll, the next one is 8B, is the ones I think we're interested in, but I would like to address, Zach, Mr. Ratkay? Do you have an introduction for the first?
If I might, Your Honor. Not being anywhere near as good at this as Mr. Zabel, who has quite the golden tongue, in fact, I'd, like I said, I'd be more comfortable here if the building was on fire versus having to talk about this, but I will do a brief introduction on these, and then, and then Mr. Ratkay and the attorney, Mr. Ferguson, may have answered questions. So the next two items on the agenda relate to the sale of a parcel of city land to Catholic charities. The parcel's been available for purchase since the completion of Heritage Boulevard. In August of 2018, the city solicited qualifications from realtors to more aggressively dispose of property with no municipal value to the city. As part of that effort's appraisals were completed on these parcels. These properties were ones that had proven to be difficult to sell for various reasons, odd shape, poor access, poor frontage, things like that. Catholic Charities has made the city a full price offer on the parcel on Heritage Boulevard. The agenda report does not discuss the intended use of the property. The allowable uses are determined by zoning ordinances or the special use permit process in front of the city hearing examiner, which in this case, a special use permit was granted at the end of last week for that parcel of property. The public has a right to appeal the special use permit, however, it must be done in Superior Court, not to council as a land use action. Does council have further questions of staff concerning that? I just wanted to kind of make sure everybody clearly understood the difference between selling property and the intended land use.
Any council members have any question? Mr. Serrano?
Yeah, I'd just like to talk through this process here. I see municipal code, section 2.120 is referenced here, and my understanding is this is falling under a minimum, a minimum bid or a price fix, minimum price of real, real property under 2120.20? Is that correct? Tip, I'm just trying to make.
I believe it's under listed sale, I think it's D.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that we're following the proper procedures, because I'm looking at some of these, and it says council needs to make the determination that it's surplus, and then list it. In the event that's the case, we could not make that decision to sell this property tonight because we are declaring it surplus in theory by this action, and then we would need to list it. So I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we've got our processes that are, you know, we're, are ducks in our lines. Can you kind of help walk me through this and make sure I'm not reading through the ordinance improperly?
No, not at all. So essentially, what, this particular piece of property predates this ordinance, so this ordinance was changed in August of 2018. So, this was, prior to this, most of these land sales were handled out of the city manager's office through deputy manager Strevel. This was a property that's been on the market for quite some time, and it was listed, and so then when we came into this particular process, it predated that. So that's, what you're seeing is a way to make sure that it not only conforms with the previous way, but we also wanted to make sure that council had an opportunity to decide if they wanted to use the current ordinance for, for being able to dispose this property as well. But, but the listing does predate the ordinance change.
Okay, I really appreciate that, because as I was reading through this and looking at the ordinances, I was kind of going back and forth, and I'm like, wait, which, where are we, and are we in the line? The last thing we need to do is make the sale and then have someone from the community be upset about that. As long as we're following the ordinance, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Serrano. Anybody else? All right, with that, we, is there a motion? Anybody want to entertain a motion? Mr. Ross?
I move to approve resolution number 3934 declaring surplus fixing a minimum price and determining the method of sale of certain real property on Heritage Boulevard.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's seconded by Mr. Maloney. All those in favor, this motion is signed by a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, and now we're here to discuss, go down 8B, and this is to discuss the purchase and sell agreement and memorandum of understanding for Catholic charities. Now, before we get to this, I'm gonna just allow a couple people, I want to allow public comment for a couple people, and I want to ensure, I want to make things very clear, because, because I want to tell the audience that the council has heard, they understand your sentiments, we spent a lot of time on this last week, and we did, spent very much of our time researching and looking into this issue. So what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna allow for tonight is to have maybe one or two people speak on those things that have not been mentioned already. There's no need to do that, we've already, we understand, we hear your voice. And then, so with that said, I want to go ahead and open it up to public meeting for, for two that are opposed and two that are in favor of this. So we'll start with the ones that are in favor. Is there anybody in favor of this that want to say a word? In favor?
Favor.
Yes, sir.
Made you laugh, though.
Okay, now, yes, sir, go ahead, Jonathan? Please state your name. Is your name on this list, Jonathan?
I know.
Please, I'm gonna ask you to please hold that sign down. Let's not put up signs above your lap, please. So John, go ahead and state your name, did you, did you sign this?
I did, I did not.
Okay, did you sign it before you leave, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, my name's Jonathan Mallahan, I'm the vice president of housing for Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington. I just wanted to note that this morning, or earlier last week, the hearing examiner did release a decision based off of the land use considerations and the impacts of the neighborhood, and found that the proposed mitigations of Catholic charities were sufficient, and granted the special use permit as well as the height variance. I do want to just add and emphasize that regardless of the decision night, if it's in favor of moving forward and selling the land, Catholic charities intended use will still be influenced by public comment and feedback. So we do plan to hold a design charrette specifically to include interested parties, but we'll directly prioritize input from immediately adjacent neighbors, so that our project, we do the very best we can to make sure the project reflects what the neighborhood would like to see and how we can mitigate any concerns that exist. So I won't rehash all the information you already had, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that that was a commitment, the Catholic Charities wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. And before the next person comes up, Mr. Ferguson, is there, could you kind of go forward and do some explanation, or do you want to wait till after, wait till after the public comment?
I can wait, fine.
Okay, so with that said, let's go ahead and, the first person to oppose, sir, you were gonna get up, and keep it to three minutes, I'm only gonna have two people come up, and please, again, I'm gonna be very specific and make sure it's something that's new material. Thank you.
I do have some photos, can I hand those out to you guys as well, or?
We don't need photos, ma'am, there's not enough time to work with that.
No worries. Good evening, Mayor Saul Martinez and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Karina Hernandez, I live at 3813 Estrella Drive in East Pasco. I'm here to speak against resolution 3935. On August 8, 2016, the city of Pasco was sued by ACLU and Berta Aranda Glat for violating section 2 of Federal Voting Rights Act by diluting the electoral power of Pasco's Latino voters, depriving Latinos an opportunity to fully participate in political process to elect candidates of their choice to Pasco City Council. The efforts became reality in our community. We believed our city council in districts 1, 2, and 6 would be transparent and keep the best interest of our districts and the city as a whole into account. However, our voice continues to be diluted, and we have been deprived of the opportunity to fully participate in the process by our representatives. To those council members that do not represent our districts where these projects are being proposed, if we are truly one Pasco, acknowledge the overburden that was, has already been placed on East Pasco for years, and make the imbalance equitable. East Pasco already has the Union Gospel Mission, the Thunderbird, Sacagawea Apartments, and two food banks, the list could go on. On January 14, 2020, where, where challenged, we were challenged to research, so our comments were, were based on facts. We found the following. First, on July 13, 2019, Tri-City Herald mentioned Pasco Haven would be built on Pasco. On July 15, NBC KNDU announced the consideration of Pasco Haven, however, it was voted, it was noted, quote, "They still do not have funding for the building nor a site finalized, but these are in the works," end quote. On December 31, 2019, the Tri-City Area Journal of Business disclosed the location. None of this information was broadcasted on the Spanish news medias or radio. As it got closer to the decision being made, we heard nothing. Why was there no outreach or transparency?
I want to ask you to wrap it up now, ma'am, please.
Second, I'm almost done. Second, on September 25, 2019, it was reported in the news, in the New York Times, the residents within 500 feet of an adult shelter resale value is estimated at 7% less than, less than a, oh my goodness, I'm sorry. Shelter resale value is estimated at 7% less than a resident further away. Retailer.com reported on March 28, 2016, that living near the homeless shelter drops your home value by 12.7%. shelter drops your home value by twelve point seven percent and decreasing in home, in my home value due to something that is not my own is doing, my own doing is unacceptable. Third-
Ma'am, I'm respectful to ask you to wrap up.
I'm almost finished, I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Yeah, I know.
Hotspotters, third, Hotspotters, a group of local community agencies completed a survey in the late January twenty nineteenth with Spokane Catholic Diocese with the only purpose to conclude, we needed housing for homelessness. Then we found Catholic Diocese of Spokane legally forms Pasco Haven LLC, August twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen. Immediately, we see the city wanting to sell property in my backyard to Pasco Haven LLC without even considering a negative impact on the largest stakeholder, my family and my neighborhood of this proposed project where the survey, where's the survey? Was the survey valid and reliable? Was my neighborhood surveyed? Is the Hotspotters' only purpose to increase the funding of their agencies at the expense of my family and my neighborhood? Hotspotters should be ashamed.
That's enough, I mean, we understand, we got it.
Am I allowed to finish?
Okay, all right, that's fair.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My neighborhood, was my neighborhood surveyed? Is the Hotspotters' only purpose to increase the funding of their agencies at the expense of my family and my neighborhood? Hotspotters should be ashamed of themselves. Fourth, on January twenty-fourteen, twenty twenty, Rhonda from Yakima Neighborhood Health spoke of their familiar similar facility on January fifteenth, twenty twenty, we drove by their building in Yakima located at one ten South Natchez Avenue. As you can see in, sorry, I was gonna provide a packet. There are homeless hanging around garbage and clothes that have not been left, that have been left. Their site has become a magnet for homelessness with still more people to come guaranteed. This is a perfect example of what can occur in our neighborhood if you vote to sell the property for the shelter. No, thank you. Last, we researched Donna Haven, Hanson Haven in Spokane. This is an industrial area, not a residential area or neighborhood. So of course, there would be no complaints and no concerns like you have, like we have. We in Pasco are residential areas with families, kids, and unity. In the last council meeting in January twenty-fourteen, twenty twenty, it was discussed that council members and staff took the time to tour the Spokane location. However, not one council member took the time to visit our districts directly impacted to solicit input or feedback. Why is our community being caught by surprise? You take the time for city surveys but no investment in contacting citizens of Pasco and especially East Pasco about this project. You thought you could easily put this project in our backyard, in our neighborhood without resistance. We feel belittled, betrayed, bullied, and not valued. Wow, is this an example of the All American City Award the city has been seeking? If Pasco gets the award, give it back. We, the property owners of Sunrise Estates that are the closest to the planned location of Pasco Haven, collected signatures from our neighbors, our Pasco residents and Pasco business owners who are against resolution three nine three five. We would like to submit these three hundred and fifty signatures to the council for you to consider as we hope your vote will be known to resolution three nine three five as you represent us, your community. Where can I leave these? Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Ma'am? You say you have the signature?
Yes.
You can hand them to the clerk over here, please. And thank you. All right, with that said, and trying to be respectful and cooperative and allowing her to take it both times, we're gonna move forward because I think it's, what we're gonna do is we're gonna hear a word from Mr. Ferguson on the process and where we're at and then from there, we'll allow, no sir, no more comments. We allow, no sir, no- Sir, we're done, we're done, thank you. Mr. Ferguson, you want to go ahead and proceed?
Sure, absolutely, thank you, Your Honor. So essentially, the one things I want to just kind of make sure we're clear on because I know there's a lot of confusion about kind of this process and what the city of Pasco's, their role and it is. To be clear, the city of Pasco in this particular situation has, has two different roles. It has the role of regulator, it also has the role of property owner. The regulator role goes through the hearing examiner, the hearing examiner goes through, applies the zoning, applies whatever conditions to the special use permit process and then that comes out through the hearing examiner who issues a decision which we've all recently heard has been issued. So that process is for the, that is solely specifically related to the land use decision. So that's how that process is handled through there. The role that we're currently under is dealing with the contract and what that means is the city is a property owner and they have to, they have to figure out a way that they can figure out how they're gonna sell that property and they do that through a contract called a purchase and sale agreement. That's what's before you tonight. So in specifically related to contracts for housing because the person who has made a full price offer for your property is inquiring about being able to use it for housing, there's a whole bunch of regulations that would apply, Fair Housing Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, several different, both federal and state statutory regimes that would apply to this type of sale. So I just want to be clear that this is not a land use decision that's before you tonight, this is a contract decision to sell property that you as the city are the owner of and you are gonna be bound by those same rules that anyone would be bound if they were selling their house or they selling property, you're gonna be bound by those same rules. In essence, you are acting as a private citizen with regard to this particular sale. So that just kind of sets the stage a little bit for what decision you have to decide to go forward with tonight and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, also, anybody else have any questions before we go into a motion and then we can discuss it? So do we want to put a motion on the table first? Ms. Serrano?
I move to approve resolution number three nine three five approving the sale and authorizing the city manager to sign the purchase and sale agreement for certain real property on Heritage Boulevard.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it to open discussion.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Serrano. Now we're gonna, we're gonna share, anybody want to be first to share their thought? Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you everyone for being here tonight. I spent the weekend, a portion of the weekend talking to some of my neighbors and I appreciate those who reached out, as I reached out to you and so I certainly thank you for taking me up on having me over in your homes or meeting with me for coffee and so thank you so much for taking the time to do that. I definitely have spent a significant amount of time doing a deeper dive on this as well, looking at things like properties in Spokane and things of that nature. I think my opinion is that, you know, Catholic charities model is a good one, that it does have a sense of best practices and we all agree that this is a problem that we need to solve in all of our cities. Homelessness is, impacts anyone at any time, you know, many of us live paycheck to check paycheck and homelessness is not too far away, I've seen that in other cities and also believe that Catholic charities will be a partner and work to mitigate issues and that there is also some support from members of the community. So having said all that, that is my opinion and my opinion, obviously about selling property and I'm in favor of things like that, but I wasn't, not elected to work solely on my opinion. I was elected to work for, on behalf of the folks in my, in my district, so because of that, I'll be against this decision in support of my community.
Please allow us, allow us to finish, allow us to finish, thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say that after our meeting last week, I did my due diligence as well as Mayor Martinez and we did spend our weekend going to Yakima to tour the facility there and one of the things amongst many that I learned about homelessness and supportive housing was that there is a conception that, a misconception that people are bussed into our city and brought here for these services and that is incorrect. Eighty-five percent of the people that are experiencing homelessness are from our community and, you know, just from conversations that I've had in this past couple of years, running for this position, I have heard people tell me that they, who have an income, they have a steady job, they're a two-income household, that they have been priced out of rentals and I know that for a fact, we have ninety-seven percent rental saturation rate. And so it is possible that there are people in our community that are also experiencing homelessness just because of the cost of housing. One of the things that, one of the things that I know that needs to be our priority for city council out of this and in the long term is what we do in our city council goals is how we prioritize housing and a diversity of housing stock, which we, we need to put that on our list. But as far as going to the Yakima facility, we spent four to five hours there. We took a tour of the facility, we met residents, it was clean, it was peaceful, there was no loitering outside. As they said, there was fencing around the perimeter, there were arbor vida landscaping. Within the facility, there was a fenced-in courtyard in which residents were allowed to, to go outside instead of loitering out, outside of the property. We actually spoke to mom who was walking her middle school son home and asked her what her observation was since the facility had been built and she said that it had a positive impact. We spoke to two next-door neighbors and this is in a residential neighborhood and one street off of the main street of Yakima and they also said that it has been positive. We spoke to students that were coming out of middle school and walking home, they had the same thing to report, there wasn't a single negative comment made about the facility. The Yakima police provided statistics about phone calls for the facility and they are as follows, so that I give it to you correctly. From two thousand eleven and two thousand seventeen, three hundred and thirty-five calls, this is prior to the building of this facility, were made to this, to this location in this neighborhood because this was an old grocery store that they renovated and turned into. So three hundred and thirty-five calls were made to the property of nuisance and since the building of this supportive housing, forty-nine calls have been made and those have been for emergency services, so medical services, nothing due to violent or drug-related uses. The other thing that I wanted to say was that we got a memo from the chief of the fire department in Spokane as well, speaking in favor of Catholic charities and the housing that they have, supportive housing that they've provided there as well. And so there are some things that I would like to propose to Jonathan of Catholic Charities if this is to go forward. One would be about curfew, one would be about drug testing and one would be about prioritizing Pasco residents first. And so that could happen at a later time if this goes through. Thank you.
No, no, ma'am, we're done with comments, we're done with public comments, please. Anybody, Mr. Serrano?
Yeah, so this has probably been the decision that I've taken the most care and concern with in the past two years on council. It's not one that I take lightly. I feel like I am embattled because two hours ago, I was an attorney and attorney Pete would say, if you don't go forward with the sale, you're a moron. Legally, there are plenty of reasons, our city attorney has eloquently explained that. He didn't call me a moron, I appreciate that. That said, I look around, I saw who was here last week and people who are concerned. I think one of the most telling statements was from a young mother who was concerned that she had just gotten her head above poverty level and then feels like we're pushing it back down. I look at Mr. Alvarado and I think he got even less sleep than I did this weekend and we don't take this lightly. I think Catholic charities has a lot to offer. I am, however, concerned that you folks have, I mean, I appreciate that you've shown up as you have, but I'm concerned it's taken this to get there. Quite frankly, I don't know that my mind's made up and to me, I guess that means I'm still a no because I can't affirmatively give a yes, so there's my hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one thing I very much want to echo is that I really value every one of you coming out tonight and coming out last, last week, the emails that I've received from those in the room and plenty that aren't. It really does mean the world to me and I really hope that you keep showing up regardless of any outcome tonight, one way or the other, I really hope you keep showing up because as Mr. Serrano had indicated, this is a segment of the community that we don't typically hear from. We have a number of ways we try to reach out to the community and try to get input, a lot of these things are out there, but it turns out y'all are busy and we need to understand and be able to respect that better. And so one of the things that I would like to see, speaking to council here and staff, is we have, we set up, two years ago, we set up an inclusivity, diversity, and equity commission with a goal of trying to make sure that everyone's voice is heard within the community and that we as a city are responding well to everyone in our, in our community. And so I would propose that one of the things we should do out of this, again, regardless of outcome of a vote, but we should make perhaps task that commission with reaching out and specifically figuring out, how do we include the folks in this room in our decision-making process early and to make sure that your voices are heard and your concerns are addressed before we get to a point where we are, we have a decision right in front of us right now and there's not a lot of further time to talk about this. So I would, that's something I'd like to see is perhaps giving them a timeline of in the next three months or six months or something to come back, have, do a little, give us a little report, go talk to all the folks. We, we on the council, every single one of us is working a full-time job. We have our families and then this is our side job and so we need help from the community to help us understand how we can better represent you. And so, so again, thank you all for coming and I really, really hope we can, we can continue to build upon just your voice coming out today. I've got a lot of words here and I'm gonna skip through some of them, I think, a little bit because I don't wanna, I don't wanna take on that, I want to be respectful of your time and of council's time. But I think it really is important to remember that the only decision we have in front of us is a potential land sale. The hearing examiner has done her work and she considers the legal implications of what we're doing and whether this is a acceptable use for this, for the space. And that is a decision that is not in front of this council here and that has been determined that this is an acceptable use of the land here. One of the things that's really important to me and last week I asked the representative from Catholic charities, if we do not sell this land, what action will you take? And his response was, we're still gonna want to be looking at Pasco. And the reality is that this is probably still gonna go in East Pasco through a private sale that the city has no control over. If you read, if you read through our packet, one of the last pages in this contract, it has a whole, has a whole list of things we are contractually holding Catholic charities to if we make this sale, where it codifies and makes contractually required some of the things that they've promised us verbally. If Catholic charities buys from a private landowner, those protections will not be in place. A private seller will not negotiate those same sort of deals. So it could very well be that if we choose not to sell this land and not pass this resolution, that we will not be better off, but perhaps the neighborhood could be worse off. I said this last week as well. I said this last week as well, if I had, if I had the power to pick where this was gonna go and, and uh Pasco. Uh, this simply wouldn't be it. I, I wouldn't put it there. The problem is that the city of Pasco is not building this facility. So ultimately, we do not get to choose where it's built. All we get to choose tonight is whether we sell the land, this particular property. Y'all have seen that there's other properties for sale in, in um East Pasco, in downtown and the surrounding community. We don't have to get to choose whether those properties owners sell and what's, and what's built there if it's a conforming use. One thing I've, I've, I've made a point over the last couple of years and I represent District Six, uh, my district goes all the way east over to Cedar. And I've spent time walking the community, uh, both during my election and I spend time driving and I spend time going through this, through, through our area. I spend a lot of time downtown. And it's important to me to see that all parts of our, our community are treated equally and fairly and that's something that we don't see. Um, you look at our sign code, it's applied differently in West Pasco than it is in downtown. If you look at the way we've looked at some of our zoning, um, including this area here where you see industrial immediately adjacent to residential. That's, that, that's not what, something you'd see in West Pasco and some of this is, this is historic, right? We are working to fix those things and we are contin- we're going to continue to work on that no matter what. And I promise you what I'm, I'm doing all I can and I'll continue to do more in the future. Mister Serrano, one of the things that, that you said was that you lost sleep over this issue and you mentioned that Mister Alvarado probably has well. Well, I certainly did. Cause this is important. I also went to Yakima and toured the facility there, I took my wife. Um, we spent, we, we spent some time in the facility, walking around, driving the neighborhood, it could've been my neighborhood. It looks the same, it feels the same. Heck, some of the streets I think were named the same. So when I, when I think about this and what decision ours, we have to make, even though we are district based. Our job is to represent the city as a whole and do what's best for the city. At the end of the day, we, I talked to the fire chiefs, our fire chief, our police chief. We heard from uh, fire chief up in Spokane, uh, we've heard from other advocates, we've heard from um, other experts in this field. And all of you. And especially when I consider the legal implications of our decision tonight. At the end of the day, I have to support the sale. And I believe it will be best for the Pasco and I believe it will be best decision for us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please, please let's, let, let's, let's let the council finish, please. Please. Ma'am. Ma'am, sir, go ahead, Mister Milne.
Um, I can say that uh, this has also been. This has also been a, a very hard issue, um, even though I don't live in East Pasco, I definitely have a lot of friends in East Pasco and I, I definitely. Feel the pain, I know I wouldn't probably want the facility next, in my neighborhood or inside of it, um, I know. Blanche and myself, we also did go down Saturday morning, we spent time in Yakima, we walked in, we. It was, I thought it was a very nice facility, um. But I, I could say that I feel like I'm being boxed in as far as what we're actually voting for, but I do know that overall the whole facility would be good for Pasco. Um, as of right now, I'm still not sure how I'm gonna vote, but uh, I will say this is a, a very tough issue. So I definitely do feel for you guys.
Ma'am, ma'am, please. Go ahead, Blanche.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Mister Milne said, uh, we took a tour of Yakima. And I also took a tour at a different time of the Spokane facility. These facilities are clean, well kept, uh, possibly could use better management, but what I saw. Was that they were well maintained, well managed and well observed, they have cameras, they have metal detectors. And from what the conversation we had with uh Ms. Hoff was that they do criminal backgrounds, so. They don't accept uh pedophalos or anyone with a crime, uh, with a criminal record. Um. I, I hear you and I understand your situation.
Please, please.
And what you may not know and I'm sharing private information here and personal information. I actually almost was homeless. Uh, my landlord allowed me to stay in the house that I was renting at. For, for almost a year and I still need to pay that back. Um, I live paycheck to paycheck. I have two children, I'm a single mother. I, I know and I realize your situation and I hear you and I understand you so well. There's a, there's a difficulty, there's, there's a deficiency of, of affordable housing. In, in Pasco and many of us have not been able to, to move into an apartment because we can't afford it. Um, I'm a first time home buyer just last year. And when I say this is Pasco needs affordable housing. We have a lot of individuals that are chronically homeless and struggling, um, like many of us. To, to be able to move into decent housing. Like most of us, I am a little unsure of how I'm gonna vote on this, but I do agree that we need affordable housing. We need um to look out for all of Pasco. And this is a very dear to my heart um situation. Because I lived it. And I know how many of you um are struggling because I lived it again, um.
Almost lived. No, 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 please.
So again, um. I do believe Pasco needs this, um. This is, this is regarding the sale of, of land and um. It's, it's a tough choice, like I said, um. But I do agree that we need to move forward and we need to um look out for all of Pasco, um, I represent all of Pasco. Um, and I do take your, your voice into consideration. Um, again, um, I'm undecided a little bit, but um. I would be in support of this fully if we have, uh, like Mister Serrano said and like Ruben said. If we have, um. Security of, of what's gonna happen and uh the management uh from Catholic charities, so. I'm undecided on this for now.
Alright, Mister Serrano, you wanna say your last words before I give my thoughts?
I'll, I'll just uh succinctly, I'll be quick, I, I appreciate what Mister Maloney said, I mean, quite frankly. Based on what we've worked with Catholic charities, this is, in my opinion, the best deal. Regardless, I voiced my opinion of where I'm gonna vote. That said, for those of you on the fence, I think um, this is the best opportunity we have. To move forward with someone who has intended to partner with us. And in the event that another private property comes up for sale, we will have no say in that activity. Um, that said. I'm compelled by my civic duty as, as a representative.
Thank you, Mister Serrano. Now, I'm gonna share uh my thoughts and my experience and uh, but before I do that. I, I just wanna say thank you to you guys for being respectful. I, I know this is an emotional situation and emotional time, but I'm gonna ask you the, whatever the vote is at the end. That we be respectful to this, to this council. That, these council members, and I wanna say this before I say my word, these council members have taken their time above and beyond. To try to research and study and, and figure out, how do we learn from this? If you don't learn from this, I don't know when you will, but I just wanna ask for your, your respect and your, your um. Your courtesy as, as we move forward. With that said, um, I wanna share my thoughts and uh. And, and my sentiment on, on this issue. So I went to Yakima myself, took my, my wife and we went to go uh evaluate and just uh visit tour of the facility in Yakima. And I noticed. The atmosphere, the uh, the neighborhood and where it was proportioned to the main street in Yakima. They have a, a wonderful program, they have a wonderful program going and they're um. They're, they're successful, they're doing well with their program. And what I found is this and, and I. And I wanna finish, uh, I wanna, I wanna ask before you comment to let me finish. So this was a neighborhood that was in need of, of public housing, uh, was in need of low income housing. Was in need because of where it was located in Yakima, they needed a lot of assistance. So they took an old um, a grocery store, remodeled it, made it beautiful and it actually improved the community. It did improve the community in that area. And so I, you know, so I, I, I had a good experience in Yakima. Then I went two days later and I went to Spokane to go visit some of the facilities that they have there. And I visited the uh, the Catholic charities uh facility that they have there. And I saw where it was located, right in the center of town with multiple other charities that had. Uh, that type of services and maybe different programs for each can speak for the other places, but I did visit the one that they have in Spokane. And Spokane's a whole different place than Yakima. Spokane is like Yakima on steroids, okay? Um, and they're trying very hard to address their issues, uh, but there was a lot of people. Uh, very hard to uh, to, to really maintain what they're trying to do there. I visited the location, um. And I will tell you, it wasn't very pleasant, it wasn't pleasant to be there, okay? So with that said. I, I talked to, I talked to two gentlemen, I talked to several people in that area, it was six o'clock at night. And sh- they shared their concern, they shared, you know, they appreciated the help, um, you know, so there was. You know, pros and cons to the whole situation. With that said, after contemplating on the experiences that I had, we're not Yakima. We're not in a community that has, excuse me, we're, 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 we're not like Yakima in the fact that. This community needed that service in that location, okay? We, we're not like that. And so I go to Spokane, you know what, we're nowhere near what Spokane is, okay? And we don't wanna, we really don't wanna get to that situation. There's, there is a lot of, there is a need and there's a lot of validity to what the Catholic charities are doing. One of the things that I, that I did struggle with is I couldn't see how they could maintain. Everything that they said they were gonna do because it's just very difficult, it's very difficult in that atmosphere to do those things. And I know they're doing their best and it, and I have the best hearted interest. And the other, the others, uh, the other uh piece of information I wanted to share was that. I realize it's you people that this is gonna affect. And I respect that. And I respect the people who wanna do good things for our community. But the reality is, is that we're here to serve our community. So I do wanna work with Catholic charities, I do wanna, I, I know we need this. I know we need to improve our processes and I guarantee you, I'm gonna do everything in my power to try to improve those processes. But for that reason. I'm not gonna go forward with this, I'm not gonna go for this. But whatever the outcome is, that's okay, please, please. But whatever the outcome is with this council. We need to respect our council members, these people, these people are putting their life, their time, their heart and soul into this job. And they take everything into consideration and we need to respect their decisions. So with that said, is there anybody else that wants to share any words? If not.
There is a.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There are a lot of voices here opposing this and how many of the people that are homeless are here? Being able to advocate for themselves is one thing I'd like to say. Second thing, uh, uh, Councilman uh Barajas uh said something about. Um, the Yakima facility um doing checks for sex offenders and that was one thing that I forgot to mention is that. There are families that do live within the facility at the Yakima uh location. And so we viewed some of those rooms. Um, and the final thing that I'd like to say is that. As much as I have com- compassion for those people who are here and their mothers and they are worried. Property owners and their business owners, we also. Have a protected class of people, which is people with disabilities. And it is something that we need to think about, that we're not saying no to just anyone and so. Counsel, um, our legal counsel, uh, you know, said it in a certain term, which was that. You know, we are acting as a property owner, you know, and so the best way I can, I can explain it to you is this. You decide to sell your home. And you put it up on the market and someone comes to you and says, here's the value of your house and I'm going to pay. What you are asking for it and you look at that person and you say. No, I'm not going to sell it to you because you're black or because you're Mexican or because you're Muslim.
Excuse me, excuse me, please.
That is.
Please.
Discriminatory.
Please. Please.
That is discriminatory and it's a problem. And the city council.
Please.
Is responsible for that liability for the entire city, so I'd just like to leave. Leave it with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Roach. Alright, with that said, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward and go, uh, if, there's no other comments. We're gonna move forward with the vote, uh, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote on this particular subject, uh, so, sir, go ahead.
Roach? I'm in support. Serrano?
No.
Alvarado?
No.
Barajas?
I'm in support.
Maloney?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Milne?
No. The vote is four to three. Alright, okay, thank you very much, um, with that, the vote passes with a four to three vote. Uh, excuse me, uh, the, the vote is rejected four to three and uh, I thank you, uh, council, once again for. Your courage and for what you guys do for this community and I just know that uh, we're gonna move forward and do the best we can from this vote. So, we're gonna move on to the next on the agenda item, which is eight C. And if, if you're gonna, please be respectful and if you wanna go ahead and go, we're gonna give you thirty seconds to exit the facility, please. Ma'am, 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 we, we need a, we need a, we need to continue with the meeting, we, we can talk later, thank you. There's an exit on that door over there, sir, if you like. Do, do you wanna take a break? You know, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna request a, a ten minute break, uh, a recess for us to. To maybe use the facilities and um. Yeah, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna ask, uh, Chief, go ahead. We're, we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a ten minute recess, uh, so we'll be back at eight. Eight, eight nineteen, thank you. eight, eight nineteen. Thank you. Mr. Chief Gier, do you wanna, do you have any preliminary comments?
Sure, as soon as I get to the right spot on here. Uh, basically, you have the same list, there was one change, um, and that's a correction, a partial correction of, or, or actually putting both names of, of Happle Center and Trac on the, on the one list, because we're kinda in, in between our ordinance calls at Trac still, our, our, or our resolution, which we, we're gonna need to change, April and I discussed that. Um, so that's the only difference from last week.
Okay, um, council, any comments, Mr. Alvarado? Oh, never mind. All right, well, um, if there's no comments, and everybody's reviewed, um, and agreed with their, uh, uh, committees that they're representing, um, can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution three nine three four. Oh, I am so sorry, I am on the wrong one. I move to approve Resolution number three nine three six, confirming mayoral appointments of council members to various local and regional boards and committees for years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
There's a motion, can I, anybody second?
I have a second.
Mr. Alvarado?
Can, can I make a quick, quick comment, comment?
Yes.
The, the one that I do have before me is, uh, probably an older version, but we did make a change to, um-
Yeah, if, if you go out and go back in, they have an updated one, and it, 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 uh, puts you as a representative for the Ben Franklin Transit.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, Mr. Serrano?
One quick comment, um, I see Mrs. Roach is gonna take over, visit Tri-Cities for me, they do have a meeting tomorrow. I can forward that packet to you, or-
I'm really glad you didn't text me at seven AM tomorrow to let you know that, thank you.
I, I figured I'd give you at least twelve hours head up.
Thank you for that warning.
No problem.
Thank you. And, Miss Roach, if there's no further comments, um, everybody in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, this motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we go to item D, and that is, uh, the House Bill fourteen oh six. Uh, Jacob Gonzalez, or, is he in attendance? So go ahead, Mr. White, you have any?
Uh, no, no updates, Mayor and, and council. Again, this is, uh, um, a set aside of a small portion of the existing sales tax for affordable housing efforts, and it can include new facilities or supplement, uh, existing efforts that we're doing. Uh, however, the definitive plan for use of this small set aside would be coming back to council in June. Uh, and that would be in line with the council-approved Tri-Cities Consortium twenty, twenty twenty-four consolidated plan.
Thank you, Mr. White, any comments from the council? Uh, I was, uh, I was actually, um, I had to read this a couple times to, to, to be sure, but that, we can, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. White, but there is no additional taxes, and there's no taxes being imposed with this, with this motion. So with that said, Ms. Blanche, Barajas?
I move to approve Resolution three nine three seven, authorizing the City of Pasco, Washington, declaring the intent to adopt legislation to authorize the use of a portion of the sales and use, um, tax for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with Substitute House Bill fourteen zero six, Chapter three three eight, laws of twenty nineteen, and matters related thereto.
There's a motion, is there a second? Mr. Alvarado's seconded the motion. Uh, if there's no further comments, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Uh, item E, HUD Section one oh eight loan contract closing documents, Mr. White?
Uh, again, no, uh, up, no updates, Mayor. Uh, after a very long process, we'll be, uh, recognizing, uh, our annual block grant allotment, uh, to, uh, leverage roughly three point eight million dollars in funds to be used for the downtown renovation project of Peanuts Park and the Farmers Market. So, uh, roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars annually will come from our, uh, community block grant allocation, and that is in the form of a twenty-year loan with, uh, HUD.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any comments from the council?
Uh, Mr. White, are there, I know I haven't seen the specifications of improvements, but are there, uh, improvements to accessibility for, you know, uh, sidewalks and, and people of all different ability levels?
Yep, the, the ADA, the, the project will meet ADA accessibility requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. White, so this, if I'm, if I remember correctly, this is somewhere in the order of about half of the cost of the, uh, Peanuts Plaza, um, um, renovations that were suggested. Could you speak at all to the scale of the project, or perhaps, Mr. Ratkai, I, I, whoever's most proficient is?
Well, the, the, the entire project, uh, maybe it shouldn't even be called the project, but the entire concept was to improve the, uh, public market space, the, uh, Peanuts Park and the Farmers Market. And then also the streetscapes that would connect the new Lewis Street overpass with the downtown area. So, you're right, it is approximately, uh, half, let's say, of the project, and then the remainder would be in, uh, much wider sidewalks on Lu- on Lewis Clark, and I think Columbia even. And, uh, just a different alignment, including, uh, the ability for, uh, parking revisions and something called parklets, which is appropriately spaced and used, uh, uh, street, uh, s- street properties for, for different downtown uses to increase pedestrian activity. So yes, it is part of a much larger concept, uh, that we worked extensively, and, and, uh, sure, Mr. Maloney, you'll, you'll remember, uh, with the public outreach component, uh, I think at least two or three Cinco de Mayo festivals, and at least two fiery food festivals.
Excellent, I did, I was trying to remember the exact scope of where that was. I know that numbers varied, plus and minuses, we've, um, as we've gone through the design process, and, and added certain scopes, revised certain scopes, you know, the, the whole process, so I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the scale of about what this was gonna accomplish and scale things, so, thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments, you know, can we entertain a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution three nine three eight, authorizing city manager to execute loan contract documents required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding from the Section one oh eight loan guarantee program, and to take all other actions necessary for the completion of the project.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, and Mrs. Roach has seconded that. If there's no further comments, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next is the water rights contract with Washington State Department of Ecology. Mr. Warley, any changes to what we discussed last week?
No changes at all, Mr. Mayor.
Looking forward to moving forward with our water rights and, uh, and, and acquiring what we need to move on, uh, with our growth, and, um, and with what we need for the future.
That is correct.
Thank you very much. Any comments by the council? If not, then we entertain a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number three nine three nine of the City of Pasco, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign the water service contract with Washington State Department of Ecology for Pasco's beneficial and, beneficial and permitted use of five thousand acres feet of water from the Lake Roosevelt Incremental Storage Release Program.
Okay, there's a motion, it's been seconded by Mrs. Roach. If there's no further comment by the council, everybody who, um, is in agreement with the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Those seem to be a lot easier than the first one. All right, next we'll go to unfinished business. Uh, Mr. Gier, uh, any, any comments, anything on unfinished business? Anybody in the council have any unfinished business they'd like to discuss?
I would like to, uh, make a comment, or perhaps, uh, something to bring up to, uh, uh, to council for, perhaps for consideration in the future. I, uh, tonight was pretty indicative that, um, uh, doing what we need to do by law as far as, um, notices to neighbors regarding a project, or things are, um, conditional use permits, things of that nature, um, I mean, times three hundred, feet may not be enough. Um, and so, uh, that, that was pretty clear in the sentiment of what I've heard, um, and so, um, I don't know, um, obviously, there's a lot to that, and, but I would, I would like to, um, bring that before council for, perhaps, uh, uh, to see if there's any interest in that.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Alvarado, I'd, I'd certainly agree that, um, uh, wholeheartedly with that, and, and I, I think that's, what, what I'd like to see is, again, uh, with maybe tasking our inclusivity commission to, to go out and, and, and gather information from the folks that, that were here, that, uh, so many of them said, "I never heard about this until it was basically, you know, time to vote." So, um, I would love to see a, a kind of a breakdown of what would work, and what did the people that came out, what, what could, what could help them engage in exactly the sort of things? Because I think that will help inform what sort of decision we should make in the future. Um, I wouldn't wanna make it hastily. I know there's legal implications with, um, how we, how we do outreach and make sure that everyone and every project is treated equitably. So, um, I just want to make sure that, um, we have an opportunity to get both public input on that, and then, of course, meet the legal requirements. So, um, so I, I agree wholeheartedly, and, uh, and the mechanism I'd like to see is perhaps using our inclusivity commission as that, as that focal point.
I'm open to a mechanism, but I think we, I, I, I definitely have a discussion I'd like to have.
All right, thank you. Thank you for those comments. If there's nobody else, we'll move on to, uh, new business. Any new business? If not, we'll move on to miscellaneous discussion. Chief Gear? All right, and, uh, next on your agenda, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do have just one last reminder that the Pasco Police Department, um, has 12 members that will be participating in the Polar Plunge this Saturday. Please come out and support them, uh, donate, and take the plunge with them. So if you don't have money to donate, take the plunge and get some sponsors. Uh, this, the funding for this, uh, event goes to the Special Olympics for the Tri-Cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brus. I do have a comment, and this is miscellaneous discussion, I just wanna, I just wanna, uh, mention of, it's amazing what people talk about. I've got more comments on what the police department did with the canine, I believe it's Mr. 509? Eddie. Eddie became officially a, um, a poli- a canine police dog, um, from, uh, Mr. Ken Roski, who did the, the oath, and I'll tell you what, uh, it, it, it went viral. I think it went nationally, and I just want to congratulate you, Ms. Roski, and your police department, and, uh, the police officer who, who, uh, took the canine in, and to do, Julie?
Julie Lee.
Julie Dean?
Julie Lee.
Lee, Julie Lee, and I, I, I just couldn't, I, I'm so glad I remembered, because I didn't want to go, I let this night finish without, you know, giving the kudos and, and, uh, and mentioning that many people came to me and said, "You know what? That was pretty cool." And hopefully, people can, um, uh, just realize that, you know, it's, it's, it's that much care. It's not just people, it's the whole community as a whole, and even including pets. So, thank you very much for that, Ms. Roski. All right, with that said, we'll go on to you.
I, wait, I have one thing that just kind of left, uh, bad taste in my mouth from earlier on, which was, uh, something I heard about hotspotters, and I'd just like to say, I really appreciate the Fire Department, Pasco Police Department, and all the other agencies that participate in the hotspotters, and I think you do a, an extraordinary job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Ms. Roach. All right, moving on, uh, item 12, executive session. We do have a need for executive session tonight. The reason for the executive session is for potential litigation. Uh, the meeting is planned to run about 20 minutes, in which we will then come back and, um, see if there's any comments from the Council. If there's not, then we will adjourn the meeting at that time. But for now, we will now go into the executive session. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, we are now back uh in our regular meeting. And I guess I would ask the Council at this time, is there any comments or any further discussion the Council needs to make? If not, then um this meeting is adjourned, thank you.